All right, we'll get started here. Say the pledge, my pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a good fourth. Um, move on. Do any public comments this evening?
There were no requests for public comments, not within sign in asking to do so.
Just move on to approve the minutes of the regular meeting. June tenth, twenty twenty four, and the executive session, June tenth, twenty twenty four.
I move, yeah, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June tenth and the executive session of June tenth.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Uh, favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sing. On to claims, Mr. Day.
Sorry, I was checking Mr. Thompson to see if he could get another picture of the construction report.
Wow, that's a heavy, severe, severe picture.
So, um, in your packet are annual claims, um, for both payroll accounts payable and a construction claim. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about them. I will note that the claims were higher than normal, about double. But if you look on page two, you will see we paid about five billion dollars to Bank of New York for our annual, or sorry, semi-annual debt service. So that's just payments on loans. So from the standpoint of, you know, did we spend a lot more money than we planned? No, we just spent more money than we usually do in a normal monthly period.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Make a motion.
If you did anything else, but not good.
No, I have my things.
Make a motion to approve the claims document as presented?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sing. On to old and unfinished business, financial matters.
Um, I'm going to pass on my normal financial report due to the holiday and the, and the timing. And also when I'm presenting in the budget, twenty twenty five, item number three, I don't have an extensive report. I'll bring back the detailed expenditures and receipts for you in August. You will see that we are tracking where we expect to track. Things are in good shape, but I'll have those detailed numbers for you in August.
Just move on to instructional report.
Good evening. We have three items on our instructional report this evening. So the first one is, I read three, and I'll be brief about every three because final results aren't published until the end of this month. So, uh, but we did wrap up our, um, our summer school last month in June. And we did have all four school, all four of our tier one schools did show an increase. So we'll, uh, we do have preliminary scores, but nothing finalized just yet. The second piece on the report is just, uh, an update from our leadership retreat that we had this summer. So, uh, we, uh, had some team building opportunities with our staff. We, uh, got some business done, but probably the highlight of that is the new district priority document, which you should have as well. So a lot of similarities from last year's, um, uh, last year's goals, with exception of one at the bottom. Uh, we increased our, uh, we're looking for increased stakeholder engagement of that district priority we had. So, um, we felt like that was a need for us this year, so we're gonna focus on it. So that was for your information too. And we'll have lots more discussions on those throughout the school year too. And then the last piece was, uh, just a highlight of our summer professional development opportunities that we've had so far. Uh, we've had three major ones, um, in the month of June. Uh, so the writing revolution was well received. That was a three day for some and two day for others training on, on our new writing curriculum. And we did have, um, someone from the reading league come in and give some Orton Gillingham instruction to select, so, uh, some select staff members and also some T B R I training that we are just continuing on with some, uh, new staff and our preschool.
Four numbers in that, the writing revolution, participation.
Writing revolution attendees, we were around a hundred and thirty attendees, so that's phenomenal. Uh, so a lot of, a lot of attendees for writing revolution, well received. We do have a couple more coming up here this month in July. So, um, we do have some training on our new, two new math materials, Reveal and Vision coming up. So sharing goes forward here for me.
Now, we changed up the instruction report a little bit this way this month. A lot of people think it's summer, not a lot of activity going on. That's clearly not the case. We had a lot of students participating in the I read summer school, a lot of students at the high school and our staff. Devin gave you the example, well over a hundred of our elementary teachers taking part in that. And we'll have very similar numbers as we jump into some of that, the, that, which focuses on mathematics. So a lot of activity.
Appreciate that. All right. Nothing else we'll go on to with the budget, twenty twenty five.
Excuse me. So in your packet is, uh, it's kind of a rundown of our budget, what we, what we have for our goals, where we're paying for certain things. You know, it feels like just a few years ago when we made the major shift away from the old general fund.
Capital projects.
Capital projects, transportation, where a bunch of our operational items all had their own little funds that we, that we messed with. And now we have just that, that big education fund, operations fund. And if you remember, education fund is, was really about what happens in the schools every day, in the classrooms every day. In the past, general fund, which was, you know, the education fund precursor included custodial and utilities and a number of other things which the state has deemed to be non-educational. Though I would argue you can't open a school without electricity or water or clean offices. But really that's not here nor there at the moment. And so we're really talking about our goals. Our goals is to drive as many dollars to the classrooms as possible. And that's by having, by, by having a good teacher scale, a good teacher pay that's going to attract and retain high quality educators to our community. It's being able to compensate our IAs, our DSTs, our, our behavior technicians. And, and those folks who are really there, you know, feet on the ground every day, our counselors, our, our social workers, our principals, assistant principals, the folks who are in that building every day driving those dollars to the classroom to, to help support what they do. And then on the operational side in that operations fund, it's really trying to be as efficient as we can be, you know, to, 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 you know, be economical on our utility use, to make sure our buildings are clean and well maintained and, and all the things, you know, that we're transporting kids safely. We have all the buses that we need to do that and the ramp drivers and those things. That's what's happening in the operational fund. But the key there is to be as efficient as possible because every dollar that we're not efficient there is a dollar that, you know, at times we're having to borrow from the, not borrow, transfer from the education fund. And that's not what we want to do. Our main mission is to educate kids, let's spend, let's spend our money there as much as possible. You know, we've been very fortunate that our A V has been growing. We have continued to get money from the state in our education fund. It's been a little bit tighter in this biennium. They're not giving as much money to the, to the base tuition that every kid receives. And they're cutting back the amount of money we're getting from, from the complexity index, the things that we use to address poverty and, uh, learning loss. And, and some of those things, um, is getting tighter. And so we, we continue to have to find those efficiencies as much as possible. We continue to use our debt service fund, um, you know, take care of some deferred maintenance, but also to, to, to expand the opportunities we have for students. You know, whether, whether it's a, a, a new performing arts facility or spending money on expanded STEM opportunities, you know, renovating the room at Maxwell last year to have a better STEM lab up there, which we didn't really have. You know, it's, it's ideals like that and making sure that we're, we're, we're having the things in our buildings that, that complement the education that we're trying to provide. The great news is we continue to, we continue to exceed our expenditures with our revenue. We continue to build our cash balance, um, in the education fund. We, we are here, we are able to weather the shortfalls in funding we're getting from the state because we've been prudent with how we spend our money in the past. We're gonna continue to do that. As you can see in the chart that shows cash balances over the years since two thousand nineteen, when we switched to this new formula, this, this new, uh, fund structure, the only thing that has gone down is our operations fund. And as we've talked in the past multiple times, that was really because we were holding too much money in that operations fund. We had deferred maintenance that we weren't taking care of because we, we had too much cash there and we were, we weren't spending it judiciously. And, and so we started doing that. We're to the point where we'll stop doing that. We're gonna, we're gonna try to hold that, that cash balance moving forward into the future. But overall, we're very, very healthy financially. We're able to accomplish the things we want to accomplish. We have some challenges in front of us. We talked about last month with, with Dr. McKibben. Right now, the way we make money in the education fund, the way we get our revenue is we have kids who show up to school. And when, you know, when our, when we're talking about an enrollment that's gonna be flat over the next decade in his estimation, that is a challenge for us. So looking for ways to grow that population would be positive. Some of it we can control, some of it we need to partner with the city and the county and make sure we're attractive and we have families moving to us. But we have set ourselves up in a way that we will be able to manage that without impacting what's happening for our kids. And, and that's really that, that end goal. I know there's some really broad rushes. I'll come back to you with a very detailed budget on where we're gonna plan to spend our money. You know, whether it's, it's classroom teachers or benefits or, or the operational side, it's custodians and bus drivers and stuff like that. We'll have that next month. I'll talk to you about advertising that budget and moving forward through that process and having our hearing then in September and adopting the budget in October. And that's really that last piece for you is the, is the budget calendar. You know, here we're, we're on July eighth, talking about this, this overview and our strategy. And, and I'm gonna meet with D L G F sometime in July, early August. And we'll be off to the races on that detailed budget to show you in August. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to pontificate about s- shortfalls in state funding.
On that last topic.
Yes.
The, the challenge is related to the complexity index. Is that just fewer dollars being allocated? Is that a change in the formula specific to that funding?
Fewer dollars from the state being allocated to it.
So it's, it's actually a little bit of both. There was a change in that formula allocation on that percent, how you determine the percentage. And, and it's old, older. You know, it was five, six years ago when they switched from, um, pre-reduced lunch percentages. It was what really drove your, your, your complexity index to, it's now a different measurement. It's a combination of, of families who qualify for SNAP and EBT and, uh, children who qualify for, um, Medicaid. Medicaid. And, and, and there's one other measure that's escaping me right now, but that's really what changed it. And everybody's percentages went from here to about half.
So that's not a measure that the change made some go up and made us go down. It's just sort of an overall.
Everybody went down. Oh, everybody went down, except for your, I mean, except for your just desperately high poverty locales, you know, I P S, Gary Schools, places like that. The other thing that they did is, is if you think about, if you think about the funding and, you know, and kind of a bar chart, you know, everybody gets, every student gets basic tuition. And then certain students got complexity index funding. And then certain students got honors programs and certain students, you know. But the main, the big main drivers were your basic tuition and your complexity. And at, at one time, when you looked at it, and, and across the state, you had people who were funded up here because they had high complexity and they had students who were getting the base tuition rate. They had high poverty, they had high need. And then you had schools like a Zionsville or a Carmel that were down here. And that's because they had really low poverty. They got the base tuition rate and they got a little bit of complexity, whereas some other people, you know, got a little more. If you think about the midpoint between those two, we were just to the, to the right of the midpoint where, where we are a little bit higher poverty than the norm. And so we were doing okay. And as they started, basically what they did is instead of that, instead of that looking like a, a line that did this, they kind of shifted it and now it's a line that's a lot flatter. And so they kept raising that basic tuition, which is great because, you know, every kid should get some money. It gets tough because the things that you need to service high need kids become more expensive over time, but we get less funding to take care. So it's really been a combination of a couple of things. It's been, everybody's complexity index went down, but the mix between basic tuition and complexity shifted so that more schools got more from basic tuition and the schools that were high poverty got less per student.
That, that range has shrunk significantly.
Yeah.
You used the example of Zionsville where it may have been four, five thousand dollars per student and I P S getting eight or nine thousand dollars per student. That has really shrunk.
And, and so right now we get about seven thousand dollars per student once we add everything together, and that includes the special ed, um, funding. That's the, that's the third kind of big mix of that is your special ed, is your special ed dollars. So we get about seven thousand dollars per student on average. The thing is, is, is a place like Zionsville and Carmel where in the past if we were seven thousand dollars, they were at four thousand dollars, they're now at, you know, fifty eight hundred, sixty two hundred dollars. So that, that recognition of the need has shifted a little bit. You're welcome. I'm good.
All right. We'll move right on to the construction project updates.
Well, this was one of my favorites to share with you over the last year because we've had a, a lot of activity. And I can tell you, a number of us have visited the auditorium in particular a couple of times in the last week. And, and I have never seen so many people in there. There, there were literally a hundred people in that auditorium with the various contractors that were there. I'll give you an idea of some of the contractors who were there. I just pulled an excerpt of some of those, for instance, J C Ripper doing a lot of that or the Geiger Peters and Skyline Couch, et cetera. They all had large crews in there because we're still on that timeline to have those, those corridors mostly finished by the end of July. In fact, we'll have that corridor that runs east-west where kids should be able to enter the building there to start the school year. They'll have that, the corridor that you're seeing right there that runs north-south will be mostly finished. However, they will be storing a lot of equipment there, uh, so we won't be utilizing that at the beginning of the year. But they're, they're moving really quick on those corridors. But inside the, the auditorium area specifically, thank you, I want you to see this. They've got all the framing up, the concrete's in place. And if you'll scroll to the next couple that we have here, this was amazing. This is standing, um, in the back of the auditorium. They've got scaffolding covering the entire floor area. And then what do you call that area up there?
The dance floor.
The dance floor that they basically put in place, um, so that they can get the, the clouds put in, in the, the ceiling there. So it's really quite an undertaking.
And, and so this picture here is standing upstairs in the balcony, looking out over the building of the dance floor. I was in there Sunday and now you cannot see.
You can see the floor.
Can't see below it at all. And if you're underneath, it looks like the ceiling's only, you know, twenty-five feet above you. It's, it's a solid dance floor now. And then actually, when it gets to the balcony, it steps up again so they can get to that set of clouds as well. It's a pretty impressive undertaking.
So going back to the, those corridors, this will be the entrance kids will be able to enter as we start the school year. They're working on that terrazzo piece there which runs the length of that corridor east to west. That was a picture taken just a couple of days later. They started putting some of the, the stone in there that they will, will polish. So it'll be a, a very impressive entrance there. And of course, the stairway that runs off to the left there that would get you to the, the balcony area. You can see the new doors going into the gymnasium now. Brings, allows a lot of light to come through, just a totally different look when, when you will be visiting the gymnasium. You're seeing that, that the terrazzo was really done there. They just, they'll come back and polish that as we, we get toward the end of the month. Some of the site work, you're seeing there, we're gonna capture a lot of that parking back once we get the, the curbs in place. Get some of that, the landscaping done.
There will be parking to the left of that.
Between that.
That you're looking down.
Yeah, between that and the building, there will be some. We'll see that fencing coming down. So a lot of excitement with the auditorium, but I don't want you to lose sight that we have other things that are happening throughout the corporation. Of course, this room just to the north of us here, our preschool room that we're adding, that will be, we'll be wrapping up the, the carpeting there here in the next week and get some furniture in there. To the junior high school, we've had just a, a, a lot of trouble with that main parking lot. So while we address that main parking lot, we also address the entrance and the egress there. Rather than be just one lane, that'll be, uh, two lanes. So you can actually enter and exit there. The next picture, please. This is a part where we've just had water sitting underneath that parking lot for most of the fifteen years that it's been there. So it's a, a, not only just a, a resurfacing, we had to, to rebuild the, the base of this. So that took us a little bit longer. I think we had the city of Greenfield a little, a little bit nervous about the fireworks. I saw the huge mound of, of dirt that was there next to the building. But they hit their timelines, they had it done and I believe striped, ready for the, the fireworks show.
Lot of, lot of credit to Smith Projects. They, they won the bid on that and they were a great partner in addressing some of the surprises we found.
And one of the pieces there that would not be a stranger to anyone who's visited the junior high school, we had that triangle, the island triangle that was always a little bit odd there in terms of how people utilize that. That was removed and we made that a little bit wider there as you make that sweep toward the, the main entrance. Of course, over at Weston, that was one that we delayed over a year to start that work. Again, we, we made a, a big step in making that a secured entry a couple of years ago, but we really left the rest of that office space alone, which was really underutilized, just a wide open area. Whereas we've created a clinic space that's a little bit more functional. And created a, a meeting room in the back. So this was taken about a week and a half ago. They just finished painting that. I think we've got carpet coming on that next week.
So, uh, actually had an email late this evening. Paint finishes tomorrow and flooring starts on seven eleven.
Okay, so that one's wrapping up pretty quickly.
The other nice thing is, is we built a conference room behind that new clinic area, which then opens up some additional office space for, um, R S R O, who's based out of there now. The new dean of students, who's gonna be based out of there halftime. So it's, it's, it's really.
Just a much better.
Much more functional space, yes.
Yeah. And then the last pictures, uh, here, we had a big mound of masonry block in the parking lot just to the north of us here. They finished installing that in the two restrooms here that are on the south end of the high school. So we've got a little bit of work ahead of them there, but that should be ready to go.
And as part of the email update on Weston, that space is now painted. They need to build a bulkhead to divide the bathroom from the hallway. But then ceiling grid starts and then flooring starts in that same timeframe. Same contractor, Burline, doing both of those projects, so.
And that, that last picture there, as we've talked about the limitations we have with parking at the soccer facility, because it's in a flood zone, we couldn't have a hard surface. So we looked at some alternatives. We've got a porous surface there. There's a, a grid that is underneath that stone and then we actually have grass growing on there. So, and then we'll line that with the paint robot that we have. So we will more than double the parking there and it'll be a, a solid and that, you know, you don't have to worry about being overly muddy there. And we've really improved the drainage there going in, into pots and dits. So that, that one really worked out better than I was envisioning.
And, and it's even greened up a lot since that picture was taken.
And then beyond that, we just have some progress updates. But they're happy to answer any questions you have about any of those projects that are going on.
Right. No, I just, I'm happy with the junior high. I did drive through there and that, that thing is gonna make it real, real nice, you know? So I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy with that.
I think it's one of those things when we designed that building, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we underestimated the number of people that would be driving. And we just have a, which Beaver's not with us this evening, but it, a lot of people driving to drop their kids off. This'll be much more functional.
And we were able to come back with heavy duty pavement around that drive. So as we have people, you know, we have other visiting schools who drop off tennis players or basketball players, you know, on that front side, you know, it's hopefully going to keep that asphalt healthier longer term.
So those are the updates we've got for you now. Of course, I'll be excited to show you what we have with the auditorium space next month.
We'll move along to board policy recommendations, second reading.
These are the same four board, four policies you would have seen last month. Made a technical correction on the, the membership piece there that Close had noted on that, that second page. The third page, but that would be the same that you would have seen in the past. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, I would recommend approving those four board policies as presented.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve the, the policies as presented?
I move that we approve the policies as presented.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, sing. On to new business, business information, Mr. Day.
Yes, we have a number of grants and donations to talk about this evening. The first, the, the corporation received donations totaling one thousand five hundred and five dollars for the Unified Champions Program. The donors are detailed in the attached letter. The food service department received a donation of one thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents from the Friends for Jessica Foundation, uh, which is Robin Linda Barnhart, to help pay lunch balances at Eden Elementary School and Maxwell Intermediate School. Harris Elementary received an anonymous donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars that was used to purchase every student a snow cone on the last day of school. Uh, Harris Elementary also received a donation of a mini fridge valued at a hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Ford family for the functional academics program. Maxwell Intermediate School received a donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Nine Star Community Trust Operation Roundup to purchase Lego robots for their STEM program. And the high school received five hundred dollars from Herf Jones that is being used for their summer faculty retreat. I ask that the school board approve the grants and donations as presented. The amount of these opportunities is five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents.
Can I get a motion to approve the grant, the donations as presented?
We'll make a motion that we approve these grants and donations as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, sing. Thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
On to health service annual report.
We have, Mrs. Haynes with us today. Come on up and share some highlights of the, the report.
Sure. I'm always glad when I can come and visit and there's no big news. Um, I know you have in your packet, um, the annual report that's produced from SNAP, which is our clinic software. So this really documents everything. Any student that walks into the clinic gets, um, a clinic visit documented, whether they're there to use the bathroom, if they're there to get a Band-Aid, whatever they come to us for gets documented in SNAP. So you'll see lots of numbers here. There is some inconsistency with whether someone chooses stomach ache versus stomach upset. Um, and that's just user judgment when they come in. So, um, but you can see on the snapshot, the stomach ache was the number one complaint of our students this year. Um, the second was headache. So stomach, stomach ache and headache, typical, normal, um, complaints from kids. We did introduce the WOW method this year, um, for headaches. So when they come in, they get a drink of water, they take ten breaths, they get ten minutes. Most headaches resolve themselves and they go back to class. Um, as you can see, we sent eighty-seven percent of the kids who did come to the clinic back to class. So the health services staff really does a great job supporting the educational, um, piece of getting the kids back in the classroom where they need to be to, to learn, um, effectively. I did wanna talk, our visits were up, two thousand eight hundred and six from last year. I think that we had, actual clinic visits had gone down because during COVID, kids didn't come to the clinic as much. And, and so now we're recovering from that, so we're coming, climbing back up. So this year, we're going to focus on resiliency and teaching the students resilience and staying in the classroom and self-care. And what can you do to help yourself not feel like this tomorrow when you come to school? Can you eat before you come? Can you make sure that you've gotten enough sleep? So teaching them some, some things, tips and tricks that they can do to help keep themselves feeling better. Big things for health services this year, from my perspective, is the health services guidelines, which was approved, um, I think at the June board meeting. And that is in all the student handbooks now. That helps, is going to help tremendously. When we have parents ask, well, where's that in writing? Um, we can now point them back to that because we had a lot of protocols in place, but they weren't necessarily available where people could see them easily. And so I know that the health assistants are really looking forward to that. We are starting this school year fully staffed. We have one brand new staff member, um, but we have someone for every building, which is phenomenal for us. So looking forward to that too. The big, big news for my department is that we receive. Uh, the big, big news for my department is that we received a grant from MHS earlier this year, late last year that offered every one of my staff members that was willing to participate, that I taught a certified clinical medical assistant class to them. And so I did have four participate and the four that started the class in um January, they all successfully passed the class in May. So we now have four um health assistants who are certified clinical medical assistants and um I'm just super proud of them and and they're they're proud too, so. Um, and that was Julie Massey at the junior high, Pam Persons at Maxwell, Sarah Potter at Weston and Becky Robertson at the high school, so. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about health services or my report.
I think our materials indicate that you yourself passed or got your master's degree in nursing as well, so.
I did.
applaud you on that.
I did.
For modeling that for all of your staff and all of our students.
It's one of the things that that Dawn has modeled in her ten, how many years have been now?
It's been here since twenty twelve.
In that time, just providing opportunities to to grow her staff and and modeling that herself, we certainly appreciate that about her.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you next July.
Uh, commencement, twenty twenty-five.
We do have a recommendation, this is one of those things we try to get on the calendar early for our high school seniors so they can invite their family members who may be in town or out of town, and we do have a recommendation for Mr. Wallbaum for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at ten AM in the the gymnasium for the commencement. We have his letter and also shows you how that fits into the the overall school calendar. He's here, he would answer any questions you might have about that recommendation, if you don't have any such questions, I'd recommend approval.
No questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at ten AM for Greenfield Central's commencement class of twenty twenty-five?
I move that we approve May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as graduation for the class of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same.
We'll get it advertised then.
All right, onto board policy recommendations, first reading.
Just uh first readings for him, that includes D two hundred, standard of care and supervision of students, D three seventy-five on staff discipline, E one twenty-five on promotion, placement and retention of students, and G three sixty, data breach and protection policy. These four recommendations came to us back in the spring from our partners at Church Church Headland Antrim based on changes mostly from the the general assembly. Be happy to answer any questions you have about, just gave a brief description about why they they made such a recommendation. Have no questions, I'll bring it back to you next month.
All right, thank you. Onto personal matters, contract recommendations, resignations, leaves and retirements.
Okay, we have a number of those, leave of absence, Katie Houston, Wendy Trissel, certified recommendations, Kenzie Anderson, Hannah Bailey, Emily Batley, August Breedlove, Christopher Cooksey, Karen Edwards, Emily Fields, Kristy Harple, Emma Merkamp Day, Abigail Townsend. As for classified recommendations, Jason Kendall. Certified resignations, Aaron Kane, Dan Katz, Annabelle Sbee, Leah Harris, Caitlin Kudla, Carlin Logan, Taylor Philhauer and Marlena Rainey. ECA recommendations, I'm gonna leave one of them out initially, uh John Albright, David O'Connor, Matt Dickerson, Annalise Fox, Chris Gaylord, I'm gonna skip Brantley, Zach Lawhorn, Matt McConnell, Derek Owen, John Pepino, Randy Reeves, Bob Scrivener, Courtney Spear, Eric Todd and Brandon Winkle. Recommend that the board approve the personnel report as presented, and of course, we would uh ask for permission to continue to hire for the upcoming school year and we'd bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, as well as give permission to hire as needed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
I have one additional name there that we'll bring back to you, now we had a little bit of a conflict of interest with a relation there, so I want to give back up to that second to last page, and we would have Brantley Coontz also recommended for uh Boys of Our City Assistant Soccer Coach.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve Brantley Coontz as Boys of Our City Assistant Soccer Coach?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same.
Thank you.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain, thank you. Onto uh spring twenty twenty-four coaching reviews and out-of-state twenty twenty-five coach recruiting additions.
Yeah, the the coaching review there, this is just a first reading that you're seeing from, as we wrap up that spring season. Spring season went well into June for us this year, happy about that. No real surprises, no changes on there, each of these coaches are currently with us for baseball, softball, men's track and women's track, those are the four spring positions that are out of out of unit. You also have recommendations, further information from the athletic directors at the high school and junior high. Be happy to take any questions you have about that, and it would be my intent to bring those back to you next month.
Thank you. Questions?
Okay.
Want to classify raises, handbooks and review?
Uh, in your packet are um both the red line and clean version of the handbook. Really tried to do, there's very little changed in that, we added it, added a column for um a new class of employee, or just really two new employees, the certified occupational therapist assistant and the uh S- SLP speech language mythology assistant. Um, other than that, we did a little bit of alignment of sick day language with our uh certified contract. Really not a lot of changes there in in the handbook language. Um, I also included the proposed um increases for hourly employees, which would be twenty-five cent per uh increase on each of the levels on the hourly scale. Um, it also included um addressing our bus drivers and our school safety officers, so some of those, um unfortunately, it's like seventy-three pages deep. Um, our preschool instructors, our related arts instructors, I mean, you can see all of that detail on those last few pages. I also included an increase of approximately um five hundred dollars for each of our clerical employees. When you convert all of those changes, um all of our employees are receiving approximately the same amount of raise on a yearly, annualized basis um as each other. It just looks a little bit different because it, you know, some of it's hourly, some of it's daily, some of it's. Um, other than that, not a lot of changes this year. I appreciate that over the last two or three versions of this, we've done some heavy lifting and and reformed this um hourly pay scale to be much more competitive. In fact, I was doing some historical look back with Mr. Gray and our transportation department and um from the, from six years ago, we have increased our bus driver pay almost thirty dollars a day. And it shows, uh we have a great set of bus drivers, we're able to attract new bus drivers to our system, we're doing a great job. You know, and and it also rolls down to our IAs and our custodial folks. We're competing in a market.
How is our staffing for custodian and our food service?
Um, we had a couple of food service positions open up um in the last month and I believe we filled all three of those. Um, from a custodial standpoint, um I believe we may have one position open on a first shift at one of our schools that we're trying to fill right now. It may involve moving some people around, uh Mr. Scowes is working on that right now. Other than that, we seem to be, we seem to be in very good shape, uh unfortunately, when we say that we get a couple people who resign, but but no, I think that we've, I think we've done a nice job, um the turnover has really gone down in the last five years. We don't have nearly as much turnover as we used to, we've been able to find some really outstanding folks that have have committed to be here long-term. Um, in fact, some of the, some of the transitions we've had, honestly, have been people who, for example, we have had the custodian at GIS who went back and and became a school safety officer, is doing an outstanding job. But he, that's really the the movement he wanted to be in, um just hadn't found the right opportunity and that opportunity ended up being with us, and that was, that was a positive turnover. So no, I think we're, we're, I think we're in really good shape, I I think uh last I heard, we had three or four bus drivers in the pipeline to get their license and and get rolling in the fall.
That's good to hear, good, thank you.
Very positive. Um, I just asked the board to approve the the changes to the handbook and the raises as presented.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the classified handbook and pay scale revision as presented?
Make a motion to approve the handbook changes as presented, as well as the pay scale and raises, raised revisions as presented?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Please interject, but I believe I made an omission.
Okay.
I don't typically ask our principals to be here in in July, we have a couple that are with us, and Mr. Curtis, do you have an introduction to make?
Yeah, I do, uh, like to introduce, well, first, uh, like to introduce Emma Day, she is taking over for Leah Harris, she'll be our new uh music and band instructor at GIS, very excited to have her, side note, this is the first time I've seen her and like she's, she's been a student in my class. Really great experience, so we're excited to have her.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think that's the only one there.
All right. All right, if we don't have anything else, uh, we'll move right along to future business, important dates, first school, our first and second teacher day is May, July twenty-ninth and July thirty, twenty twenty-four. First student day, Wednesday, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, I know my kids are looking forward to that. We have a school board meeting Monday, August the twelfth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock. Topics for future agenda, uh budget twenty twenty-five, it's a public hearing, technology annual report, uh school improvement plans. If we have nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thanks, everyone.